Good evening. This time I'd like to call to order the Ordinance Committee and Downtown Economic Growth Committee relative to Council Order 2016-285. This is an order for the land disposition agreement with the parcel H1 on the Hancock Park Lot. Madam President, please go ahead.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Cole.
Present.
Counselor Thomas.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Present.
Counselor Moore.
Present.
Pursuant into the opening law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present in our deemed knowledgeable and personal. At this time, I'd like to call forward Bill Giri, Counsel, to Mayor Pope's office relative to the order for an update.
Thank you, Madam President, for the interview, colleagues on the Council and the committee. We are receiving presenting additional information as expected to the proposal for the parcel titled H1. Significantly large time is not advised as opposed to produce this. It asked, and manning of his time to up to include here in packets, the copy of the initial presentation that was made when we first introduced this, and it is the summary of the elements of the proposed project at fifteen thirty Hancock Street. Also included is a fact sheet related to that. I'd like to just refresh the memory of those who were present, as well as those who may not have been present for that meeting. We did it on the cover page. You'll see what was the original proposal by LBC. Essentially entirely on land they own along Hancock Street, along the numbers of fifteen hundred fifteen thirty Hancock Street and beyond to fifteen thirty four, fifteen thirty eight. And that was their original proposal to the city approximately a year before I began all with the downtown development. LBC as a company has invested significantly in Quincy over the course of the two and a half years that they've been here, purchasing a total of two hundred and forty-three thousand square feet of commercial property for approximately twenty-two, actually an excess of twenty-two million dollars. And the parcels that are now owned by them that are part of this proposal total thirty-four thousand seven hundred and four square feet. So this project initiated and originated as a proposal, as I mentioned at our opening session, for the hotel. The developer worked my way to attempt to secure financing for a hotel, as well as potentially a flag hotel off the eye of that site. And during the course of their efforts, the financiers, as well as a private consultant firm that specializes in hotel development, provided them with an opinion that at this particular time, there is not a market in downtown Quincy for a hotel. And that's what led them to look at building a residential, a residential building, a hundred seventy-one units, thirty-six individuals, could be converted in the future. They're all on second floor of the building, and they could be converted in the future to hotel rooms should a market for those rooms become available and apparent. I might add that all of their efforts in this respect were reviewed by our experts, who everyone in council knows, and she's our expert, and she's the expert for many others in the meeting. We were hoping she would be here this evening because she's out of state testifying in the trial as a real estate appraisal expert. She also possesses considerable expertise with respect to hotel developments, and she provides counsel to the Mass Court, among other public agencies, with respect to hotel developments on her near properties. So the benefits of this project evolved over the course of our review of their proposal, and particularly as I mentioned in the opening presentation, the metrics of the building changed significantly to meet public needs, needs that the city articulated to developers as to the infrastructure in the adjoining area. So their building, as initially proposed, and as depicted on the front page of your packet that Jen provided, ran from roughly opposite Alvis at fifteen thirty adjacent Antigua Street to their current hotel, the Norris Suites Hotel, down through where Dollar Shoe Store is and where Fuji is located. And the city had a longstanding plan as part of the overall, going back to the streetworks there, to extend the five district street so that would connect with a bridge that is being designed by the Commonwealth to connect Bourbon Parkway into the Ross area, across Hancock Street into the Hancock lot, and is in plan that this would be an access road from New Fox Street to the garage that's contemplated for the Hancock lot, which the administration will be presenting in the near term to the council for its review, as well as scheduling a public hearing, public meetings, a hearing, a public meeting for that proposal. So as the city viewed its infrastructure needs, that included the, not only the street, the extension of the Flatland Street at the southern end of their original building, it included the replacement, the necessary replacement of a portion of what was a tributary drainage stream to the Town Brook. And this culvert, so to speak, is over a hundred years old and needs replacement. And it happens to be located right under the first building owned by LBC at the corner, the Fox Street. And part of our plan, as I described in the materials and in my initial presentation, is to relocate that culvert and rebuild it. It will need to be rebuilt for its entire course out to a location near the Via Road where it will join the relocated Town Brook, run parallel for a portion near there with the hand park road. So that was another constraint. So we kept identifying constraints to their initial proposed development in terms of the configuration with building size of their building. And finally, we wanted to seize the opportunity in relocating this culvert to also provide pedestrian access to the Hancock lot by, from Hancock Street, rather than have the building go contiguous with Norris Suites Hotel. And that process linked with our desire to have their building set back ten feet from the sidewalk on Hancock Street, the white, the sidewalk along Hancock Street, for the course of that building as faces Hancock Street. In accordance with the design plans of the U of B, essentially, we shoehorned their building back into the Hancock lot, onto a portion of the Hancock lot, which that's the area of the Blighland area. And we pushed their building back to about ten thousand square feet, ten thousand one hundred ninety-six square feet. And that's how the building came to be configured, as it is currently configured, and as you can see in the last two pages of the materials that have been furnished here. You also will note that the pedestrian passageway and civic space that is planned to be part of this building is encased in glass, very contemporary, and we wanted to avoid the fall of simply creating another outlet. We wanted a inviting space that was going to activate this neighborhood for residents and visitors alike. And we came up with the notion of the atrium. Because we wanted to maintain access to the drainage and the culvert for any future needs, we decided the most efficient way to accomplish this is for the city to acquire that in fees and with the owner. Likewise, the city will own the sidewalk in front, and likewise, the city will own the Clive and Street extension when it's ultimately extended at some point in time in the future. So that's how this building looks shaped. Not that it was the shape that the proponent, LBC, had initially intended. So we arranged a several, as I indicated to you in my communications, several transactions, all feet, where in essence, we would acquire the frontage along Hancock Street. We acquired the area that's above the culvert, including the area within the atrium in feet. And in turn, we convey to LBC the ten thousand square feet that is proposed as the disposition from the parking lot, and it's at the back of their building, not on the frontage. So we take from them five thousand fifty-seven square feet. They have ten thousand one hundred ninety-six square feet that we proposed to convey to them for a difference, a delta of four thousand five hundred thirty-nine square feet that they are acquiring in this exchange. So it's important to note that in addition to the infrastructure improvements, particularly the Town Brook, which relates to issues we have with inflow and infiltration and drainage and drainage. This is, this parcel is in the middle of the downtown. Yes?
Bill, I mean, thank you. I just wanted to jump on that as a question. I know we may really delve into more on the present this evening. Because you've identified this, and I know I raised this as a point in one of our previous meetings, about the liability that exists to the city, and yes, Joe Shea must get called up, so I see your ears perking up, but the liability that incurs to the city of the Town Brook culvert, while we relocated the Town Brook, we relocated the flow, culverts remain underneath the Hancock Park Lot. This particular parcel, the H2 parcel, has a section of the culvert. Is there active flow at H2?
It's a very, very low flow. I will defer to Jake White of Wooded Incurrent. I knew that, and Wooded Incurrent has worked very closely with us, very closely with the engineering and design firms retained by LBC on these issues. And quite candidly, working on these issues, both in this instance with LBC and in prior LDA with O'Connell, is where we realized that there was so much infrastructure work that needs to be done. We're talking about many of these utilities being over a hundred years old, that the most efficient way to get these projects accomplished would be to have the developers undertake through a contract with the city, the natural work, because they're intimately related to their own projects. And that's what brought us, before the council, requesting support for the local petition, which we approved and which the legislature returned enacted, which confers upon the city the authority to do that. With respect to your question.
Please. And I guess I just want to understand, even if we're not in the LDA situation we're in, the liability of the Town Brook in that location is incumbent upon city.
That's correct. The former Town Brook, current flows, I'm not exactly, I'm not exactly.
So the tributary to the Town Brook that exists still flowing over the park lot?
Correct.
Okay. And what, I know, I've seen the video, and I've spent a lot of time on the previous existing conditions before the relocation. Would, would, were there improvements? Will we do the relocation of the main flow? Were there improvements made to this tributary? Or what is the existing situation we have?
Present in the existing culvert through the, in fact, long time, sort of, bunch of miscellaneous construction, that more essentially centers, particularly that portion of the road that's under, such buildings, existing buildings now, further downstream in the community area of the Via Road is corrugated metal pipe, which is currently in a.
A short section.
For instance.
And the reconstruction of this culvert, is there any project cost estimates?
We're currently compiling those now.
Range.
For the immediate relocation associated with this parcel, approximately.
Million and a half. And this is a liability that is incumbent upon the city regardless of this project? So the same way, you know, we have water and sewer infrastructure running underneath a storm drain and a stormwater infrastructure, at least in the public city as well?
It is part of municipal drainage system.
This is part of municipal drainage system. This is not specific drainage to their property. And other parcels affected by this tributary?
The tributary above this location, that certain of this culvert serves, approximately thirty of here, watershed, includes a portion of the Ross garage area, a portion of the Hancock Street, a lot of between now, between Seehawke and here in, in Via Road, as well as portions of the weather, in Jeffon Street.
And when you're saying low flow, we're not seeing the water volume comparative to the main, the main line of the Town Brook?
That's correct.
Give me kind of a delta, try to just understand what you're saying.
Well, the Town Brook relocation directed approximately forty or fifty percent of the flow that it once saw.
Yep.
So the only remaining tributary now is remaining drainage connection, but a two relocation of the Town Brook and existing drainage and secondary infrastructure.
Okay. And is there a timeline for this? Does this culvert repair work need to be done prior to the public improvements that are being proposed? Right? So part of what we heard when we talked about the streetworks projects was how the Town Brook has to be relocated to promote development to occur, right? Structurally, that had to happen, A had to happen first. In this situation, are we saying the public improvements can occur prior to the structural repairs to the culvert, or the culvert, this million and a half worth of city liability funding must occur prior to this development? I'm just trying to put a piece of, what's the city's obligation relative to the Town Brook, conferred to this project?
Sure. The first phase of the repair or location of this culvert within conjunction with the death after demolition of this building, in the name of Hancock Street.
So the developer would then do this work in conjunction with this project? The city will be funding the work?
Correct.
And will be hearing about that project information? Time to be determined?
The administration will come before the council for a different request, and all of these projects, because they're all interconnected, all of these projects, including the garage, will be separately and distinctly outlined as to what their costs are and what the urgency and need for those improvements are.
I mean, there's no question, the city, the H2, we are, the H2 structure, you know, this is a can, this has been kicked a long time, we've seen, you know, the start of downtown development not occurring, we moved the Town Brook, I think, what, this heart, there's a lot of conversation about relocation of the Town Brook. The attention to details, it wasn't a hundred percent complete. This is the other, the other facet that remains. I'm just trying to understand what the city's obligation is relative to us, you know, I can get support and say it's a million and a half, I don't have to structure work for this project to proceed, it's incumbent on the city. So just trying to understand that in context. My other question was going to be, well, I lived with Pam McKinnon, I know my colleagues and I have great value and respect for her input. If we're being unable to attend, do we expect her at our next meeting? Or can we get her comments? I think it's very important for us to hear from her, preferably for us to ask questions. But if she's unable to attend, can we get her input?
Yes. As I said, she was testifying in court today. I would say that she could not, she ordinarily would be here. Have asked her to appear here at the council's next meeting to provide the council with the answer to your questions on the appraisal. Quite candidly, as we all know, and as her title indicates, she is the expert, trying to get the explanation from me, would be to know a bit, because I get my explanations from her. She was active throughout this whole process. I did not have direct contact with the appraiser, except on one occasion, to give him some clarification on questions we had. And this was a complicated, as I mentioned to several times individually, because of the engineering needs for the realignment of the culvert, the setbacks and other infrastructure issues, there were a number of issues that needed to be resolved between Wooded Incurrent and High Horn Engineering, and Mr. Mike Fabiano, who was the lead engineer for them on behalf of LBC, testified at our opening presentation. And so they worked very closely to work out all these plans, and all those plans had to be worked out, and then we made to Diversy, who were his review. And as we reviewed them, we all determined that the cleanest way was to do fee transfers. Because, as you pointed out, the liability that the city would have, I might also mention that LBC owns these buildings, which are likely, which are our demographic division. If we were to be approaching this in a disjointed fashion, we were just looking at project to project, knowing that this project had done, the alternative is rather, and LBC, I might add, in acquiring these buildings, acquired them for three point two million dollars. The alternative for us to get this infrastructure repaired would have placed us potentially in a position of the required to take the, one of those buildings, at least by eminent domain, paying for the building to relocate the project. Here, we are going to have the best of both worlds. LBC is proposing to build a building, and those current buildings that are on site generate forty thousand dollars a year in property taxes. The projected tax, taxes, and they're not doing the one twenty-one, they're going to add the lower taxes. The projected taxes for this building, property taxes alone, in the first year or thereabouts, when it gets up and running, will be four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. So I think it's important that as we look at this project, the city's really not, and should not, be in the business of land disposition, selling land. We're not realtors. We are in the business of developing communities, revitalizing communities, in this instance, our downtown area. So among the complicity of benefits that this project brings is the fact that not only will there be residents living in this building for us, and new civic space, new access to a new garage, but it's, it's activated that old area with new retail activity, retail activity that is sorely lacking along that stretch for variety of users. And that's really the nexus here that we talk about here so frequently, of promoting economic development within the downtown. I know the first two projects have been residential in nature, but this one, because of its strategic location, has the opportunity to accomplish, or help us accomplish, as a first step, the revitalization of economic activity in downtown Quincy, when downtown Quincy was an economic engine for the city. So that's where we're meeting with this. And thank you for your indulgence in letting me give you at least a refresher for those of you who were here for the initial consideration. And with that, I'll ask Diversy to step forward and give you a summary of the appraisal conducted on behalf of the city, and to respond to any question you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Classify, include stormwater management, downtown as a community benefit as well. So, Mr. Tversky?
Sure. How's that fit?
I don't, Mr.?
Mr. Gary.
Mr. Gary. Excuse me. Mr. Gary. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you rested that out so quickly. I'm sorry. One, our lead counselor has actually received just recently a copy of this appraisal grant. And he isn't going to be here this evening?
Yes.
So none of us have really had the opportunity to get his opinion related specifically to this appraisal. So is Mr. Tversky prepared to come back the next evening to react in relation to this? What, I can't answer that. I will certainly ask you. Why I'm asking from the city's perspective, again, because this is, I mean, there's some question, as you know, in terms of why, given the fact that Mr. Shea can't be here this evening, some of the level of presentation that we might be this evening. So again, I have not had the benefit of this opinion related to this specific document. I don't think my colleagues have either. I don't think so. So again, I just, this is a very common doubt, but this McKinnon is not here, who again, we don't just kind of rely on, trying to explain some of the, this, so again, you said she would be at the next meeting. We're going to have some, had a meeting of minds at some point in relation to this, in terms of the people who seem to be advising us in relation to this matter?
I do not know that Mr. Shea is not going to be present.
No, give it time, but yeah, until.
Late in the day.
And again, I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I'm just trying to get a sense of the situation today.
I'm simply explaining that I did not know that Shea was not going to be here. As a matter of fact, we had made arrangements for him to testify prior at council meeting, and he was unable, unavailable to attend that, and I didn't know that until that day. So we certainly take every opportunity, and it's important to note, since you and I have communicated with one another individually, that we have worked very closely with Mr. Shea on the LDA. We discussed the appraisal, the ongoing appraisal with him, and we certainly always hope that Mr. Shea is available to share his counsel with you and with us. In our dealings with the council, for LBC and myself, we virtually accept all of his recommendations.
No, and again, I'm not questioning that, but what I'm saying is, I think, again, in terms of timing below, when he probably received this appraisal, with we were some that, his input is helpful, but also, particularly given the lengthy discussion that occurred the last time that we had, is Mr. McKinnon being present, it seems to me that that, in that context, that to make a full sense of what is unquestionably a very complex analysis on that. And again, I'm happy to ask quite, I mean, if people have questions, I'm more. And again, I'm happy to ask quite, I mean, if people have questions, I'm more than listening. But I'm just hoping that, again, coming back for a second, particularly if our council raises specific questions, that we may have, um, wait, would you please make certain that happens? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diversy. We appreciate your contribution to the appraisal on behalf of the city of Quincy. Want that in part to yourself.
Good evening. I'd be happy to come back whenever, when Pam's here. So far, I'm really hesitant to come tonight and if available. So, my office is in Hanum, and I can come back without much difficulty. Let me just start by introducing myself in terms of my experience. I've been doing real estate appraisals for over 35 years. Many of those years were spent in office space in Quincy Center. I was located at 1250 Hancock Street, 1150 Hancock Street, 1218 Hancock Street, as well as 7 Foster Street. I tried to figure out how many years I was actually there, and I couldn't. So, I'm very familiar with Quincy Center. I was at the groundbreaking ceremony of President's Place, and that happened in the, that was in the, uh, place. During that time, I worked for the Boston Five-Six Bank, which was one of the developers. Well, they were lenders as well as a joint venture partner with, I think, Campanelli and the Sharni companies when they built that. And that was really the first redevelopment that took place in Quincy Center. In some time, we did a marketing center site. So, and during that time, we got new appraisals in Quincy, some for the city, as well as for private clients. So, that's number one. I just want to emphasize that I am very familiar with Quincy Center. Two, I was an appraisal standpoint, I've achieved the highest designation in the industry called the MAI designation, similar to here in accounting being a CPA. So, from that standpoint, I do these kind of appraisals all the time. I'll further add, 120, I think in 2000, I was president of the local chapter of the Appraisal Institute. I was also for 17 years on the member, elected member of the Board of Assessors in Hanum. And my practice now is a specialized practice. I do, I've done all kinds of things for all kinds of clients. But currently, it's more specialized in these type of transactions. I do a lot of work with Mass Department of Transportation, MWR, Urban Services Administration, as well as a lot of municipalities, as well as private clients. So, that's my background. I was, and I'll also state that I'm an independent fee appraiser. I was hired by the, by this, by the city to come up with an independent opinion of the value of this transaction. And that's what I did. And so, Bill Alpino, I think summarized the project. What my task was, or scope was, is to figure out the net effect of this land exchange between the city and the developer. And, yeah.
I just really want to be clear, the primary purpose then of the appraisal was essentially the benefit of this particular land swap?
Well, yeah, to estimate the net effect, the valuation effect. Not all the other.
Valuation.
That was discussed and was ultimately considered beyond the scope of the appraisal. Tried to get into evaluating the tangible benefits. This was really to value the tangible effect, net effect of this exchange between the city and the developer. And as Bill explains, the city was transferring 10,000 square feet in fee simple to the developers. And the city was getting back around 5,000 square feet, 5,500 square feet. So, the net effect in terms of the exchange was around 4,500 square feet. So, there's several different ways you can, you could approach that problem. One is to look at, okay, what's, you know, the, the city was transferring back land, part of the parking lot. And they were getting land that is fronted, Hancock Street. Sometimes you can get into evaluating the quality of parcel that's being transferred. But in this case, which is very typical, similar to what you do in sort of an eminent domain transaction, where the city is or a municipality is taking property. You value that, you use a technique called the before and after method, which is what I did. So, basically what I did is I valued the developer's original parcel before this whole proposed exchange, and came up with a particular value. And then looked at the value of the piece after the exchange. And then the difference between the two would measure the benefit. If it's eminent domain, you're measuring damages in this case, because it's not an eminent domain situation. It's, you're just measuring the difference between the value before the exchange and the value after the after the exchange. So, that's a quick summary of it. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so I make certain that I understand, is it, is it, parcel in its entirety, the before and after value that were actually being added? Or are we looking at the segments of the land, the specific parcel that were transferred as opposed to what they're transferred over?
Well, before. Analysis was the developer's parcel as a standalone piece. Based on the terms of what could they build there. And then, you know, to some extent, I am not an expert in terms of coming up with, going through all the zoning engineering, to figure out what physically and legally can be put on that site. The city hired an engineer to, to come up with what could be built on that site on a standalone basis by zoning. And then that same engineering company made the same estimate. You know, it was a little, wasn't completely, and there was some modification, maybe some modifications to their numbers based on some change in the land area change. But that was minor. And then said, okay, what can, now that they've got their, you know, now that they've got an extra 4,500 square feet, what can they build on the site physically and legally? And so, once we had those two numbers, I valued the parcel based on those development parameters, before and after, both on a standalone by right basis. By right, I mean, based on, sorry, what you can build on there.
You conclude that the net market valuation between this estimated fee of about half a million, that half a million dollars. What does that, just per a layperson's terms, what does this mean? What does this mean for us, as counselors, who are trying to decide this? What's the particular benefit related to this as it relates to those who are saying, you know, why us making this particular deal? That Quincy is actually benefiting from that in some way? Can you just walk me through what that reconciliation means?
Well, yeah, then it does not get into the intangible factor.
Sorry about that. Share that, about the value per se of the half million. What is the meaning of that half million?
Well, the meaning is, the developers are getting another, an extra 4,500 square feet of land. And land in urban areas, it's not simply a function of what the square footage is of that land. It's what can they build on that land? What, how high can they go up? So, there's a, you know, if, if this was land in a, you know, a non-urban area, where people aren't building up to seven stories, it'd be worth, they could only build one story. It's worth a lot less than if you go to seven. Because seven stories has seven times the amount of development potential. So, that, so land is going to be worth more, even though it's only 4,500 square feet, because it's 4,500 square feet times seven. Not, you know, there's parking, parking law on the first and fourth on a by right basis. Generally, I think the FARs were around like a little, the fact that all the parking, you know, some setbacks, and because of the weird shape of the building, you couldn't build exactly right to the line. But, so, it's, that $500,000 represents the value of that forty, extra 4,500 square feet.
No, is that, is that being represented, is that should be a potential acquisition cost related to that?
Say it again.
Is the meaning of this appraisal, is that that's a recommended acquisition cost for that parcel while including the land swap? Is that pointing at half a million? In other words, is the, is the person who's acquiring that certain property recommending that they pay half a million to that?
Well, I, you know, there are other, all I'm saying is that that's what that land is worth. There are other factors, maybe, I don't know. I don't want to say that's a recognition as to what they should acquire it for. I'm saying that's what it's worth, whether there's any negotiation that takes place. It's not, that's not.
No, again, you're saying, just based on your appraisal, if I get that.
That valuation standpoint, it's about a half a million.
And again, I know this very little time. I know this other, my colleagues have specific questions for this evening. But I was interested in, in some point, walking through what we perceive to be the limiting conditions of this appraisal in some way. And again, it's amazing the stuff that can come before sometimes, in terms of what's with the technical nature of it. I guess that's what I'm saying. But if we look at the first specific condition that you talked about, I think you might, is that what you were kind of referring to already in terms of estimating value in some of this?
Well, I said.
It's on, we're on page.
No, I, I have.
On the top.
It's in that cover section. What I mentioned at the beginning of that, I'm not an expert in the whole engineering aspect of figuring out what footprint you can put on a particular site before, you know, it was, their site on a standalone basis before this acquisition. And the engineering firm, what they did is, they provided an estimate only on parcel A. When it was ordered by the city, that was their request of the engineer. What's the footprint you could put on parcel A? Well, it turned out, they also own, you know, they didn't include parcel A1 and parcel A2, which they own in their original estimate. So, what I did is I got a sort of, I gladly got another estimate from the engineer to say, okay, let's, you know, you'd be there saying what Alex, the contractor, did on the whole piece. I didn't have that. So, basically took their numbers, sort of, you know, pro-rata way, and translated it to that total parcel that's all there is. So, that's number one. Number two was, you know, similar to that. They did an estimate on A and B, but it included, it was a little different than what was actually, what he, what parcels A and B ended up being. So, again, they had, they had two estimates, but the final plans of the site that they made were slightly different. So, we interpolated a little bit to fit what was actually happening based on the general numbers that came up. So, that's what goes number one and two. It's simply me saying, you know, I had to adjust these a little bit based on what they, you know, they didn't provide me based on these actual parcels. You know, and the third one, you know, had to do with the parking issue. And as part of the land opening agreement, it went from what was allowed on the sites on a before and after basis by right. By right, they had a by-on-site parking. It generally would have been parking on the first and second floor of the residential areas. It would have been on floors three through seven. Through the city negotiating to have them commit to residential spaces at a particular rate in the parking garage, they were able to put residential spaces on floors one and two.
Right, well, again, we're running out of time. That's the final piece. I did one, I was curious. I think you talked about the consideration in parking agreement, and that wasn't the factor that is the alternative highest investment result?
Well, we, there was, we did some internal analysis of that. It was, so, by not having to build on-site parking, their potential building area, the residential area increased. So, the valuation increased, but that's offset by some tangible and intangible benefits to the city. And we were never able to quantify all of the intangible benefits. So, rather than trying to quantify some of these intangible benefits, that was, part of it was taken out of this by skull of the site. And again, and then there was clients saying to me, you know, this is getting, in consultant consultation with Pam, they say, how are we going to quantify? consultant consultation with family, they say, how are we going to quantify? Yes, there's something you can quantify, you know, they're going to be paying rent for a parking space, and those have a value over and above what the cost of, of it is to construct a garage. So, any, you wouldn't have to, if you built a garage on a speculative basis, you, you wouldn't have to deal with the extra risk involved in building spaces for another fifty or one hundred and fifty spaces, not knowing whether you're going to be able to rent them, or how long it will take to rent those spaces, which incumbent on development in the area for users of those space. So, it became difficult to try to quantify all of them. So, it was just like, look, at this point, let's leave, let's try, let's leave all the, let's leave this out of the agreement at this point.
As an appraiser, if that, so-called, I forget what it's called, build, we had our agreement placed around that specific apartment, that being, then we do a better ability than to quantify, or relate that to the value?
Well, but, it can be quantified, some of, some of these intangible benefits, you'll get me a list of all the different expenses, you know, if that is, you know, having first floor retail was important. So, as, so, there was a benefit to having first floor retail, which would generate economic activity versus first and second floor parking spaces. So, we, we never got to that point to really getting into all the, trying to figure out what all the benefits were, and trying to quantify them from that evaluation standpoint. It was just taken out of the sort.
I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you as well, Mr. Tversky. I appreciate, appreciate, and I do hope you do come back, because I think there'll probably be more questions as Counselor Chief, if you have any to do with this.
Mr. Tversky, do you mention to be a consultant manager? Do you have a conversation with him during your appraisal process?
Uh, yes. Yeah, you know, when I had questions, some of the questions, I went to Pam to get the answers, and one of them was this engineering thing I talked about. I said, Pam, if I want to do this before and after, you know, we need to, you need to get, I think you need to get a study done by an expert, that would provide some professional expertise to this, because the valuation of property, the value of the property is, it really relates to what you can, what you can build on. And, you know, the engineer may have said, well, you know, because it's an odd shaped site, you know, even though you can build to a certain FAR floor area ratio, because of the unusual shape, you're going to be able to get much less. But I, you know, that, that's their expertise. So, that was on, a question like that, I would go to Pam on, and she would say, yes, okay, I agree with you, I'll go get an engineering study, and we'll, we'll get that for you as part, so it can be part of your appraisal.
And you, and you are to say what goes into the top recovery, can you make the initial?
Say that again?
The limiting condition being the top recovery on parcel A one?
I don't follow the question, but.
The engineer would decide.
Yeah, yeah, they, they were sure that they would, they would recognize that.
With that, we'll go quick to Counselor Public, we're going to wrap up. We are going to be continuing this meeting, two weeks to Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, April eighteenth, if you're available that evening, or if you're going to be off at six thirty. So, we definitely want to continue this conversation. I think it's important to have both you and Pam and Mr. Shea all together, having the same conversation, asking all questions with all parties present. So, we do appreciate you being here tonight as planned, with that, one, two, ten, and that's important. But that final, final words, Counselor Public.
I lose positive recommendation by the Unions Committee of two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five.
One clarification, Counselor Public. One good question, on the Council order two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five, relative to the entire LDA.
That's the only matter, it's land distribution. Move positive recommendation.
There was questions around the well-asked area.
Move positive recommendation by the Unions Committee to the full Council of two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five.
And, per.
Counselor Chief?
No.
Counselor Corning?
Yes.
Counselor Sedgwick?
No.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
No.
Counselor Conde?
No.
Counselor Lawrence?
Now, remaining, according to Council order two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five, stays included, like, recommendation that is currently proposed, to be built, and scheduled for and what. I think at this point, with all information presented towards this, it's very frustrating to have these pieces, matters, and frustration appearing is, what is expected to be before us tonight, not before us tonight? So, why don't we, Mr. Gary and I, continue this discussion offline, making sure that all information is prepared, ready, prior to scheduling.
Thank you very much. We will replace both Ms. Shea, as well as Mr. Tversky, and she will be present. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. With that, the Unions Committee is.